Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our first of two meetings this evening, the public meeting of planning for Monday, October 27, 2025. Are there any disclosure of conflict of interest? Seeing none, motion to accept the agenda, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Councilor Massey that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda for the public meeting of planning on Monday, October 27, 2025.
Any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to ratify the minutes for the public meeting of planning for Monday, September 8. Counselor Caddell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Manley, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry accepts the minutes of the public meeting of planning of Monday, September 8, 2025.
Any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, moving on to number four, zoning bylaw amendment. First one up is zoning bylaw amendment number Z-072025, Judy and Daryl McLeod. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First file of three this evening, all three pretty straightforward. They are all surplus dwelling zonings. So moving forward, so 07-2025, the owners Judy and Daryl McLeod. The address for that property, 2300 Kenyon Concession Road 8 in Alexandria. Little overall map, you see Alexandria on the bottom and the 417, so it's pretty much halfway between. It's actually on the corner of County Road 34 and Kenyon Concession Road 8, so it's that large 200 acres property there on the corner. It goes right from concession to concession. And this is what the owners are proposing to do, so they have, they received their conditional approval for severance, so they basically want to sever off the pink portion from the rest of the, of the 200 acre property, which is in blue right there that you see. There's two civic numbers that you see there, but there's actually only one house now on the property. There's one dwelling and then there's a few other accessory buildings, but there, there's only one dwelling even though there's two civic numbers. So there used to be two, I believe, but now they're only using one. So the purpose for this application is actually to, again, it's a surplus, so it's to rezone both properties. So we want to rezone the 198 acres from general ag to general ag special exception 263 to basically prohibit residential development and to acknowledge a deficiency in lot frontage. So lot frontage in this case, even though it runs all along County Road 34, the frontage is actually on Kenyon Concession Road 8, and it only has 76 meters on Kenyon Concession Road 8, so we're basically acknowledging this deficiency. And the, it's also to rezone the severed portion, so where the dwellings will be, approximately five acres, so from general ag to general ag special exception 264 to prohibit agricultural use on the property. So yeah, as I said at the bottom there, the effect of the application, this is really just to clear two of the conditions of the severance, which has already been approved by the SDG counties. So this is just a view of the property altogether, so as you can see, the colors are the other way around here. The pink portion is actually being, sorry, the purple portion is being severed from the big pink portion, so it's just what's facing the dwelling that's, that's fronting on Kenyon Concession Road 8, that's being severed from the agricultural lands. Official plan designation, agricultural resource lands all across, there's the creek that runs through it. Zoning designation, so it matches the official plan, general agricultural and a little bit of flood plain. So the size for this property, so right now it's 203 acres. The owners are severing off five acres for the residential portion and they're keeping the 198 acres for agricultural uses. So both, both the retained and severed portion are compliant with our zoning bylaw. And for frontage, so 76 meters for the retained portion, so that's why we're acknowledging this. Technically, we're supposed to have 200 meters for agricultural lands, in this case, it's just, it's just not there, so we're just acknowledging the deficiency. And the severed portion is proposed at 52.51 meters, which is compliant with our zoning bylaw. So discussion, it's currently used as residential and field, so the use of the property is not going to change, it's going to stay exactly as it is there, it's just we're creating a new lot for the residential portion. There's currently four buildings on the severed portion, including a single family dwelling and two, one has been demolished, so there's actually only two accessory buildings now that are going to stay with the residential portion. There are no buildings on the agricultural portion for the severance. There's one existing driveway for the residential portion of Kenyon Concession Road 8, which will remain, and that's where the civic number is, I'll show it on the next picture. That's going to remain exactly as is and going to be used for the residence. And there's another entrance, but because it also has like frontage on, on the exterior side, on the exterior side of the property, the, the entrance for the fields is actually on County Road 34, and it's going to remain. So both portions have an entrance, no other entrances are proposed at this point. So that's a picture of the existing driveway that's going to remain for the residential portion, it's actually shared with the dwelling on the left side of the picture there, so they have the same driveway, but they go down a little bit further down to, to get to their dwelling there, so that's going to stay exactly like that. There's a private septic, that's the other entrance off of County Road 34. That's the dwelling that we're severing off. There's a little typo here, there's an existing class four septic system on the southwest of the building, so where it dips down, not on the southeast, where is there, there's a little forestry use that's going to remain as well. I think I have a picture there, right there. So that's where, like, that's looking southeast, so that's a little, like, kind of little forest, little forest that you see, this is going to remain with the residential portion, so this is going to stay exactly like, like it is there. Private well, storm water is diverse on, on that same property. There's no other issues with that severance really, there's a creek that runs through it, as I mentioned, so we did receive a comment from Reason Region Conservation if there's ever some alteration with that creek or whatnot, right now we're just severing off the rez, that's not a problem. And yeah, that's it for that one. So in conclusion, based on the criteria above, proposed zoning amendment conforms to policies of SDG official plan, consistent with the PPS, and it's compliant with the township of North Glengarry zoning bylaw. And just to say it again, voting on this zoning amendment will happen at subsequent council meeting. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you for your report. Questions or comments? Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a comment, nice to see a good five acres staying with the property.
I thought of that. Yeah. They, with, Peter Young is really, really reasonable with that, and in this case, like, when you see it on the map, it's clear that, that that should be kept with the rez, so there, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're going to be disappointed later on, though.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just kind of in general, Jacob, the, the field, the entrance on 34, can we do a civic number on that for the, I forget what the name of the project, Emily?
Emily.
Emily. Can we, can we do that if they ask for it?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. For the questions from members of the committee? Seeing none, if you can, oh, if you could ask three times?
Does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application being presented? A second time, does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application being presented? A third and final time, does anyone wish to speak in, sorry, in favor or against the application being presented?
Okay, thank you. So just a little hint that when everybody doesn't disagree with it, it's most likely it's going to pass at the next council meeting, so. Okay, moving on to zoning bylaw, bylaw amendment number Z-082025, William Gordon Metcalf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The address for that several, for that zoning amendment, sorry, 18123, that's a very hard road name to say for a French guy, so I'm just going to say in French, Atal Road in Maxville. So that's where it is, so it's pretty much between Maxville and the 417, right there on Atal Road, that's a overview of the property, so it's actually like just a typical farm property with the dwelling and the barn, the south end, and then the rest is all fields. That's a little close up. So what you see there, again here for acreage, we were just discussing, so this is not actually what's going to be happening with the severance. It's been discussed with the counties and we're just going to try to, again, so it makes sense, follow a little bit more the, the green space and the trees, so this is too big, this is about six acres, so it was discussed and it kind of met in the middle. It was reduced to, I think, just over 2.1 acres, it was reduced to pretty much just surround the trees, so the property is going to go around the green space and the trees over there. It will include the septic system, of course, we checked the setback for that, but anyway, all that to say that it, the fields that you see there that are within the pink portion, which is the rez portion, are actually going to stay with the agricultural lands. So the purpose for this application, pretty much the same thing, but different numbers. The retained portion is 44.6 acres, and it's going to be for, to prohibit residential development and to acknowledge the deficiency in lot area from the required 74 acres to 44.6. So even before the severance, it was smaller than 74 acres, so here what we're doing is basically just acknowledging that it is. And it's actually to also rezone the severed portion, the 2.1 acres, from general ag to general ag special exception 266 to prohibit agricultural use and to acknowledge a deficiency in lot frontage from the required 45 meters to 17.7 meters, mainly due because this is the typical flag lot, so it's got a very narrow driveway going right down to Atal Road, where it will have its frontage. So the effect of this application, again, it's really just to clear some, the, two of the conditions of the severance application. This is just an overview of the property right there. Official plan designation, agricultural resource lands. Zoning designation, general agricultural, and there's no flood plain, I think it's just a typo, sorry, it's really, it's all general ag for that one. Quick discussion, so as I mentioned, the entire property is 46 acres, but 44 acres are being retained and 2.1 are being severed off, and the 44.6 is just being acknowledged that it's smaller than the 74. Lot frontage, here really, there's just the, the flag lot thing where it will have a very narrow driveway going down to Atal Road, so 17.7 it's being acknowledged instead of the 45 meters that is required in the zoning bylaw. So again here, current use is dwelling and fields, and there are no proposed changes after the zoning bylaw amendment and the consent application. Same use are going to be kept, just a new property created. There are four buildings, all staying with the residential portion, there's just one single family dwelling and three accessory buildings. The owner already did the change of use on the barn, so there was an old barn, he already did remove all the agricultural equipment, so it's really just a residential storage. On this one, there's also an existing silo that, that will remain. This is permitted, like, even what, like, when they apply the severance, it's being discussed, they basically just want us to go, CBO to go on site and see if the silo is in good structural condition. In this case it is, so it can be, it can stay with the residential portion even if it's clearly not residential use, but it can stay, it's permitted. In this case, there's only one in existing driveway, it's going to be kept for the residential portion, the 17.7 meter wide entrance. There's no other entrance on the agricultural portion, most likely will not be required either because the fields can easily be accessible via neighboring fields, so that's how it's currently being used. The existing entrance is not being used by tractors, it's all by neighboring fields, so that's not a problem for now. But this is a, it's a township road, it's a municipal road, so if the owner wanted to have an entrance, he could just apply, get an entrance, same thing, get a new civic number, because the existing civic number is going to stay with the dwelling. So that's the driveway that you see there, the fields on both sides are being severed off, the driveway and the house way at the end over there, so that's, there's still a little bit of close up, so you see the silo on top of the barn there, so the dwelling's on the right side and all the accessory buildings are on the right side, so this will all be, like, the, the new property lines will surround that, the area where the trees and the buildings are, so this is all going to be kept for residential use. Then again here, class four septic system on the southeast of the building, private well. As you saw on my overall pictures, there's really the only thing that was checked when the severance happened really is the Maxville Lagoon, that's just a little bit south of there. It's far enough so it doesn't create any issues with the severance, so that's okay. Besides that, that's pretty much it, civic number, that's good. So yeah, same thing for this one, so based on the criteria above, the proposed zoning amendment conforms with SDG official plan, it's consistent with PPS, and it's compliant with the township's zoning bylaw. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Jacob. Questions or comments from the committee? Go ahead, Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jacob, so the silo can't be used?
It, it can be used for residential storage, basically, so I had that issue before and very close to there on County Road 20, just setting north of Maxville, same thing, silo is in super good shape still and the owner doesn't really want to demolish it because it's expensive. And most of the, like, most of the people who are keeping the silo, they want it for, for looks, like to have a rural residential property, as long as it's not creating a health and safety hazard and it's safe and sound, they're, even, the counties are okay if it stays as well, so, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Jenna?
Does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application being presented? A second time, does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application being presented? A third and final time, does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application being presented?
Okay, thank you. Moving on to our third zoning bylaw amendment, number Z-092025, 8872058, Canada Inc., Gordon McDonald. And Jacob?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the address for this property, 2829 Glen Robertson Road, so it's County Road 10 in Alexandria. So there, there it is, so you see the town of Alexandria on the left side, so it's just heading towards Glen Robertson, a few kilometers going east, so right there, the, it's the purple rectangle, it's not very clear there, but it's right there, so. A little close up of the property, so that's what it is right now, you've got the dwelling and the accessory buildings on the, sorry, the southeast corner, and then the rest is all fields. The road that you see at the bottom of the screen is the County Road 10, and what you see up there is the railway tracks. So that's a little bit, like, closer to the property, so you've got the dwelling close to the road, you've got the two accessory buildings, and then there's another, it's an older barn, currently used and, I guess, a residential, residential storage, I'll show a picture later, the owner may decide just to demolish that one because it's in poor structural condition, so that's going to be discussed later. So the purpose of the application for that one, again, part of a severance application, so it's to rezone the 21.5 acres from general ag to general ag 267 to prohibit residential development, to acknowledge a deficiency in lot frontage from the required 200 meters to 134 meters, and it's to acknowledge the, I guess, the existing deficiency from the required 74 acres of lot area to 21.5. And it's also to rezone the severed portion, which is the residential portion, to special exception dash 268 to simply prohibit agricultural use. Again, here, part of a severance application, so it's to clear the two conditions, this is an overall view of the severance right there. Official plan designation, agricultural resource lands, and same thing for our zoning designation, it's matching, so general ag and just a little bit of a flood plain also on the, on the very northwest corner. Here, the existing size of the property is 23 acres, so as you can see, already smaller than the 74, so that's why we're acknowledging this deficiency. But besides that, the severed portion is 1.5 acres for the residential lot, and it's, it's, it's large enough, and in this case, it's pretty small, but it does make sense with the layout of the property, so it was not an issue in this case here. That's it for there, and the frontage, as I mentioned, we're acknowledging the 134 for the ag lands, required 200, and the severed, severed portion is 84 meters and it's only required to have 45, so that's not a problem. Discussion for that one, as I mentioned, I'll show a picture later, but there's currently four buildings on the residential property, one of them will probably be demolished, the rest are all already residential storage, so no problem there, there's no silo for that one. There's one small agricultural storage building that's going to remain on the agricultural portion, so that's not an issue either. The entrances for that property, there's, there's two, there's almost three existing driveways for the residential portion, so they're very close together, there's a little roundabout. These are going to stay for the, for the dwelling, for the residential portion, and there's also an existing entrance for the agricultural portion, all on the County Road 10. So this is the entrance that I mean, so you've got the one going to the garage, and just west of that, you've got the one going to the dwelling. So these two, even though it's on a county road, the counties permitted them to stay exactly like that, and then I think, yeah, there, that's the picture looking like, I'm looking at Alexandria, basically, looking west, you see on the right side, there's another entrance on the field, so that is an existing entrance for the fields being severed off. So there's no other applications for entrances for that one either, the civic number will stay with the dwelling. Yeah, and septic system, so there's, there's lots of room for the septic system where the property lines are created. This is the building I'm talking about, so that's the old barn, so the owner will have the option, so I guess in this case, not that we were lucky, but it's easy, so they have to do a change of use on this building because it's agricultural, so when we do that, like, obviously needs some structural repairs, so either they demolish it or they repair it, so the, the owners will decide what, what they do with that building. So this is just an overall view, the, that's where the septic system is, you've got the dwelling on the right side and the storage building are just behind the house that you see there. And then just another picture to show the field that's going to be severed off, so the cedar hedge that you see will be the new property line, so the fields will be the fields and the dwelling, the dwelling, so the use is not changing for that one either. And again here, conclusion, proposed zoning bylaw amendment conforms to SDG official plan, it's consistent with the PPS, and it's compliant with the township's zoning bylaw. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Jacob. Questions or comments on this one? The committee? Okay, Jenna?
Does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application being presented? A second time, does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application being presented? A third and final time, does anyone wish to speak in favor or against the application being presented?
Okay, thank you. So moving on, there's no old business, no new business, motion to adjourn, Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Massey, there being no further business to discuss, the public meeting of planning was adjourned at 5:55 PM.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. Our next meeting is at 6:00 PM, so we'll take a six-minute break and then we'll get going. Thank you. Okay, good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular meeting of council for Monday, October 27th, 2025. I could ask everyone to please stand for our national anthem. Thank you, everyone. So good evening and welcome to members of council, staff and the public. We will, I will call the meeting to order. Is there any declaration of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof? Seeing none, motion to accept the agenda, councillor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Cadell, that the council of the township of North Glengarry accepts the agenda of the regular meeting of council on Monday, October 27th, 2025.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the agenda? Do we do new business? We do have, we have an item under, we have an item under new business, yes. Oh, you want to discussion St Vincent de Paul? Okay, thank you. So as amended, all those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. And adoption of previous minutes, councillor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Manley, that the minutes of the following meeting be adopted as circulated. Regular meeting of council minutes, Tuesday, October 14th, 2025.
Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Motion is carried. There are no delegations this evening. Moving on to staff reports, administrative department, AD 2025-13, Strong Mayor's Powers, 2026 Budget Process, councillor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Could I ask for a recorded vote on this before we move on?
Before we, yeah.
All right, so moved by myself, seconded by councillor Madden. Whereas the mayor of North Glengarry has been granted strong mayor powers under the authority of section 284.3 of the Ontario Municipal Act, whereas the authorities described above required, required direction and oversight by the mayor in preparation of the annual municipal budget in consultation with staff. Now therefore be it resolved that council acknowledges the above and authorizes the mayor to delegate the director of financial services treasurer and the chief administrative officer clerk the responsibility to prepare the draft 2026 budget, including but not limited to, number one, compilation of departmental operating and capital budgets, two, coordination across departments to ensure alignment with municipal strategic priorities, three, preparation of periodic updates and recommendations for the mayor's review. Be it further resolved that the draft budget prepared under this delegation shall be submitted to council for approval in accordance with the township's established budget process.
Okay, thank you. I'll ask the CAO to speak to that.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, members of council. This is just a very short report. Councillor Manley read the, the, the motion that goes with the report. Essentially, this is allowing us to carry on with the process that we've, we've used in the past. As you all know, there's a strong mayor's powers in, in the municipal act now that allows the mayor to essentially develop the budget, present it and have it move forward from there. If that's done by, done by February, then there's a process under the act as well to handle that. So in discussions with Mayor McDonald and the directors and council, we thought that, you know, just get it out there that we're going to essentially follow the same process that we've always, always followed, which I believe everybody's in favor with. So this just formalizes that and just makes it clear that we're going to do what we've done in the past, bring it forward. Staff are working diligently on the budget right now. We're having the meeting on, coming to the whole meeting on Monday where we'll present the, the treasurer will present kind of a high level overview of, for context, kind of where we're at situationally. And then the directors will present their capital budgets. No decisions, just for context. And then the process will roll forward through there with rolling out of the full budget in, in December, the draft, a month or so for review, come back in December, January 2026 for discussion and approval. So that's the report, Mr. Mayor. Happy to answer any questions if there's any.
Okay, thank you. And of course, it said, if you've, in the budget, it has the directive that I'll sign under the authority of section 284.3 being the power to direct municipal employees pursuant to section 284.3 of the municipal act, strong mayor powers. This mayoral decision delegates responsibilities to support preparation of the 2026 draft municipal budget. The mayor hereby directs the director of finances and services treasurer and the chief administrative officer to prepare a 2026 municipal budget, including compilation of departmental operating and capital budgets, coordination across departments and preparation of periodic updates and recommendations. The draft budget shall be submitted to council for approval in accordance with the township's established budget process. The mayoral, the directive comes into effect October 27th, 2025, and that will be signed by me. Questions or comments? Seeing none. And the mayor, sorry, councillor Madden has requested a recorded vote. So I will start at the top. Yay or nay, Deputy Mayor Williams?
Yay.
Councillor Massey? Councillor Cadell? Councillor Manley? Councillor Madden? Councillor Martin? Mayor McDonald? And I am a yay. Motion is carried. There are none opposed. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to lease agreement with Care4 Health and Community Services, councillor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Martin, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives staff report AD 2025-14, lease agreement with Care4 Health and Community Services. And the council passed bylaw number 342025 being a bylaw to authorize the mayor and CAO clerk to complete a lease agreement with Care4 Health and Community Services related to space at 48 Elgin Street East Alexandria. And that all previous lease agreements between the township of North Glengarry and Care4 Health and Community Services be and hereby are rescinded. And that the CAO clerk be authorized to do all manner of act or anything to give effect to the lease agreement. And that bylaw 342025 be read a first, second and third time and enacted in open council this 27th day of October, 2025.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Tim?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to thank councillor Cadell and yourself for working with me and the folks, not only the folks with, from Care4, but the Legion folks as well, to bring this to a successful conclusion this evening. This is in the Legion building. There's the, the two tenants. There's obviously the Legion and Care4. Both are good tenants. They've been there for quite some time. The lease agreement with Care4 had expired a while ago and there's been discussion over the last few months about updating it and making some changes, just to make it more relevant in the context of who's in there and what it's being used for. I'm not going to go through the whole report. I'll just highlight a couple of elements that are, the, the bulk of the agreement is boilerplate language around tenant and landlord. The new agreement, you notice, kind of highlights that the building is shared and the tenant should communicate and cooperate as they do now, but it just kind of highlights that we're asking those folks to, to cooperate. As I mentioned, the township obviously owns the building, so there's really no rent. It's a dollar per, per tenant for year, so, per year. So it's, it's good for, for both. It reduces Care4's share of the utilities cost from 50 to 40%. It's 50/50. And that's a recognition of occasional use of the, some of the upstairs space by the Legion for executive meetings. It also explicitly allows the quid blinders to use that space upstairs. So that's a minor reduction for them. And it's a five-year, you'll notice it's a five-year term with a five-year renewal upon agreement of the parties. Again, that's a standard, that's a standard clause. So it's been reviewed with Care4. They're, they're happy with it. And as well through councillor Cadell, it's been reviewed through, with the folks at the Legion, they're happy with it as well. So get it signed if council agrees and then, and move it forward.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. There are none opposed. Okay, moving on to AD 2025-15, 2025 Municipal Emergency Control Group, councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives staff report AD 2025-15, 2025 Municipal Emergency Control Group update for information purposes only.
Okay, thank you. Jenna?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in accordance with the Emergency Management and Civilian Protection Act, the municipality is required to maintain an emergency management program that includes emergency plans, public education initiatives, and training and exercises for staff. So over the last 10 months, the Municipal Emergency Control Group, the M E C G, which is much easier to say, met three times. The first meeting was in March, where included the review of the emergency response plan, the bylaw, the appointment of the community emergency management coordinator and the information officer. During the preparedness week in May, a social media campaign was promoted, the seasonal, sorry, seasonal emergency kit. In the second meeting, it focused on updates from the critical infrastructure inventory, or the HIRA, as we call it, and as well as the, oh, is it that? The critical infrastructure, sorry, I've kind of got all caught up. In October, the M E C G conducted a tabletop exercise stimulating a severe ice storm resulting in 72-hour power outage and mass and multiple vehicle collisions. And after that, we also completed an MIS 200 refresher training, ensuring that continued compliance and readiness under the act. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Jenna. Any questions or comments on it? Go ahead, councillor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick comment. Can we do another information, social media post as we come into winter, just to remind people about preparedness and kits and all that good stuff? I think our timing on it would be beneficial. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried, none opposed. Okay, thank you. Moving on to Community Services Department, CS 2025-20, heritage designation of Alexandria Train Station, Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the council of the township of North Glengarry receives staff report number CS 2025-20, heritage designation of the town, of the Alexandria Train Station. And that council receives bylaw 372025 being a bylaw to designate the property of 45 MacDougal Street East Alexandria as a property of cultural heritage value or interest. And that bylaw 372025 be read a first, second and third time and enacted in open council this 27th day of October, 2025.
Okay, thank you. Welcome, Stephanie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So back in September, council had passed a resolution directing staff to proceed with the designation process to the municipal register for both the Glengarry County Archives Building as well as the Alexandria Train Station, per the recommendations of the Arts, Culture and Heritage Committee. So subsequently notices of intent to designate were sent out to the property owners. So I can provide you a bit of an update with those two properties. The first property for the Glengarry County Archives designation, unfortunately during a council meeting in October, the township of South Glengarry, as the co-owner of the Glengarry County Archives Building with the township of North Glengarry, had passed a resolution to object proceeding with the designation. So nonetheless, we have received that objection during the designated objection period. And so as such, the township of North Glengarry, our staff are proactively planning to present a delegation to the council of South Glengarry to hopefully clarify any of their concerns with the designation process of this property. So we hope to come back to council with further information or any further updates surrounding the designation of the Glengarry County Archives Building, pending further consultation with South Glengarry. In terms of the Alexandria Train Station designation, the 30-day window for objections has passed and we have not received any objections for moving forward with that property for designation. It should be noted that this property is already federally designated, so we really didn't anticipate any, any objections. Nonetheless, all that to say, we are good to proceed with the bylaw subject to council's approval. So in terms of next step, subject to the bylaw being passed this evening, we would then proceed with issuing a letter to the property owner once again confirming that the bylaw has been passed. Another 30-day objection period for the bylaw will, will begin at that point. And we will proceed with notifying the Ontario Heritage Trust surrounding the past bylaw. And as well, we will issue a notice of heritage designation to be posted on the North Glengarry Township website. So subject to any questions, we are looking to proceed with the bylaw for the designation of the Alexandria Train Station this evening.
Okay, thank you. I'll just speak quickly to the designation of the archives. I did apologize to the mayor and deputy mayor that in speaking with the, the committee, they hadn't considered it as well. And then it came to council and we didn't think of it. And they are 50% owners of the building. And I think they just wanted the information that it wasn't going to cost more money to have it designated and which we all know that that's not the case. And so I think they'll be fine with it once it's presented to them. But, but I did. But I did, on behalf of the township, apologize to them.
Any other further questions? Go ahead, deputy mayor.
Yeah, thanks for that. And I think it's, I'm glad that you're going and doing a delegation, giving them further information on this. It's appropriate. Just, I'm just wondering about the window, because it says, it talks here that if council decides to proceed, it must pass the designation bylaw within that 90-day window. So if South Glengarry was to reconsider their decision, is there time, like before that window runs out?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we do have an opportunity, and I think that's why we're planning at the, ideally the next council meeting that South Glengarry will have in early November, to do the delegation in hopes of rectifying this before the year's end, because I believe that 90-day window, following the objection deadline of October 23rd, is still within, you know, we would have ample time to proceed. At the end of the day, council could ideally proceed with proceeding with the bylaw, should they wish to, but obviously, we value the cohesion with South Glengarry and want to do this in partnership if we wish to proceed. But we do feel that, given the 90-day window, we should have adequate time to provide, you know, information to South Glengarry to clarify any concerns that they have and give them an opportunity to reconsider.
Okay, any further questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Maybe Stephanie, you could just give a quick update on the ice at Glengarry Sports Palace, which is some good news, so.
Yeah, sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Definitely some exciting news for the users of the Glengarry Sports Palace and the greater community today, to share that we are making ice at the arena. So that's a good news story. We've been patiently waiting for the completion of the new chiller to be installed and the flushing exercise to take place. So nonetheless, we received some positive outcomes late last week, so we've begun the work to start up the ice to align with our revised start date of November 2nd. The staff have been instrumental in kind of pivoting and adjusting their schedules to make sure that the ice gets done on time. So kudos to the team for coming together to make this happen, to align with those timelines. So overall, good news story today.
Awesome. Good job to everyone. Okay, moving on to the Treasury Department, TR 2025-20, Appointment of Tile Drainage Inspector. Councillor Cadell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Manley, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report TR 2025-20, Appointment of a Tile Drainage Inspector, and that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry adopts bylaw 35-2025 being a bylaw to appoint a Tile Drainage Inspector, and that bylaw 35-2025 be read a first, second, and third time and enacted in open council this 27th day of October 2025.
Welcome Zoe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's a requirement under the Tile Drainage Act that a municipality appoints someone to inspect tile drainage systems that are installed under the Tile Drainage Loan Program. In the past, the township's drainage superintendent was also responsible for these inspections, but with the move to contracted drainage services, it's not always possible or feasible for shade group to come down to actually perform the inspections. Because of this, we're proposing that we appoint a position instead of an individual, and a variety of positions. These positions are familiar with the tile drainage process, and by appointing a variety of positions, it ensures an inspector is available when inspection is required. So currently, inspections are very infrequent. However, there's usually only a small timeframe for these inspections. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? Go ahead, councillor Madden.
Just one, I think it's a smart approach. I like the fact that we've got multiple positions that can actually fulfill this and that we're going to get it done as required. And I know it's going to fall on Jacob, of course, or so he claims, but thank you. It's a good call, good policy.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. There are none opposed. Okay, moving on to TR 2025-21, Tile Drainage Loan and Rating Bylaw. Councillor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Madden, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report number 2025-20, Appointment of a Tile Drainage Inspector, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry approves the application for a Tile Drainage Loan for Roll Number 011101600730000 in the amount of $35,000, and that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry adopts bylaw 362025 being a rating bylaw to impose special annual drainage rates upon land in respect of the money that is borrowed under the Tile Drainage Act, and that bylaw 362025 be read a first, second, and third time and enacted in open council this 27th day of October 2025.
Okay, thank you. Zoe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At the September 29th meeting of council, council accepted a Tile Drainage Loan application for this property in the estimated amount of $34,200. After installation, the finalized loan amount is $35,000, and it represents 75 percent of the before-tax total. So the Director of Building Bylaw and Planning inspected the work and signed off on the inspection and completion certificate, and staff are now recommending that council approve the attached bylaws in respect of owing money under the Tile Drainage Act. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Questions or comments? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Thank you, Zoe. Moving on to the Fire Department, FD 2025-04, Mental Health Supports for Public Safety Personnel Grant Program 2025-26 Agreement. Councillor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Martin, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report number FD 2025-04, Mental Health Supports for Public Safety Personnel, MHS 4PSP, Grant Program 2025-26 Agreement, and council approved and authorized a transfer payment agreement between His Majesty the King and right of the province of Ontario, represented by the Minister of the Solicitor General for the province of Ontario, the ministry, and the Township of North Glengarry, the municipality, related to funding provided under the Mental Health Supports for Public Safety Personnel, MHS 4PSP, Grant Program 2025-26.
Okay, thank you. Welcome Chief Roy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Ministry of Solicitor General has partnered with Warrior Health to implement the Mental Health Support for Public Safety Personnel Program to provide specialized mental health and resiliency supports and services for Ontario trauma-exposed public safety personnel and their families. Warrior Health will manage a service delivery model that provides mental health services to both public safety personnel and public safety organizations across Ontario. In July, the Fire Department submitted an application to the Mental Health Support for Public Safety Personnel Grant Program, and on September 29th, we were notified of a successful application in the amount of $25,000. The funding will support our fire department in accessing Warrior Health's support for training resources for our members. The funding will provide access to the following free, fee-for-service supports offered by Wounded Warriors Canada, Homewood Health, Centre for Addiction and Mental Health, Trillium Health Partners, and Boots on the Ground. Some of the programs include general health and wellness programs, peer support training, leadership training, mindfulness training, supports to reduce mental health stigma, pre-employment, mental health screening, and recruitment tools. As part of the condition of the grant, these funds will be delivered on or before March 31st, 2026, followed by a report back on April 30th, 2026. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Good news story. Questions or comments? Go ahead, councillor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, I was just curious when I was reading this, like, is the 1 to 6, the, all of the programs, will they all be accessed? Or is it sort of a pick and choose? Is it, how's this? I was just sort of curious about the way this is structured.
Yeah, so basically through the PSOs, it's an organization, and basically it is, we pick and choose. So we've already, through the grant in the application, we were able to select what our goals were and how we were going to achieve them. So it is based on selected programs that Wounded Warriors or Boots on the Ground offer. So all these programs are online, and basically it's a fee-for-service. So we go on there, we apply for it, we submit it, they provide the training program, and then the grant is thus funding all the peer support programs and all these programs that are for firefighters.
So the, like the online stuff, is it, you know, each station or all the stations are going to be together to do these? I presume there's individual aspects to this as well?
Yeah, so there's multitude of various different programs. So one, for example, a peer support program, that would be for selected members. So the goal is to have a peer support team within North Glengarry where we can, our members will be able to access a peer support, a peer member for, should they need any type of trauma response, or just be able to speak to somebody. As well as, so some of these courses are online courses. There's also, such as a leadership course, where there's going to be some in-person. So it's a blended model that's being provided. So it's actually a pick and choose, but we want to kind of suit our needs for our department with the funding behind, provided by this grant.
And out of curiosity, is there any aspect for families as well? Or is this primarily for members?
No, so based on the programs that I've selected, is, some of it is based on, for the families, to include the families, as well as to assist in terms of pre-employment whenever we're conducting all our onboard training, so.
Awesome. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Okay, councillor Cadell.
Is everything readily available with them? If you need to contact them, is it instant contact? You don't get stacked up with too many other people or whatever?
Yeah, so this is through you, Mr. Mayor. This is, these are training programs that we're going to be developing so that we can develop our own policies, ensure that our PTSD policies are up to date, and our leadership team is able to support all the needs required and to be able to support that peer support team, and to be able to have the knowledge and the expertise of how to deliver that and to ensure that our members have all those resources available. We do have, so it is a fundamental of, it's a training-based type of program to get us to a certain point, to ensure that we have sufficient programs in place.
Okay, subsequent?
Just for the trainees, several taking the same thing? Would they be doing it all at the same time, or it's all individual? You work through it at your own pace?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So there is some online programs, or there's going to be selected in-person training. So that's all going to be, whenever we go on, it's... So the idea is that we're going to have, the in-person training would be like a peer support team, the leadership training, that's going to be in-person. There's going to be resources for members to go on, to have an understanding, to... Like example is that the stigma surrounding mental health, so how to kind of... So it's all resources for our members to be able to have at their fingertips.
Councillor Massey.
Yeah, it is great news. I think we were discussing that in the last year or something, and regarding mental health for firefighters, because they are, they're always the first one on the scene of an accident or fire or something, and we're looking to fund, and so this is good news. But going on, like I know we got, it's great that we do have money, but I'd like to see money put aside in the budget every year to keep this program going. I know $35,000, it's going to go quickly with the training and the courses and the... But make sure that the firefighters are taken care of when they have issues and stress and PTSD or something. So I'd like to counsel, like, this year we're covered, but in the future years, maybe put an amount aside so we can keep the program going. Just, we got lucky this year, we got the program, but what if we don't get it? I'd like to see it going anyway, so just comment.
Okay. Okay, any further questions or comments at this time? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Thank you. Moving on to Public Works Department, Adoption of Engineering Design Standards for Subdivisions and Site Plans. Councillor Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by deputy mayor Williams, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report number PW 2025-21, Adoption of Engineering Design Standards for Subdivisions and Site Plans. That the Council of the Township of North Glengarry adopts the Engineering Design Standards for Subdivisions and Site Plans as the official engineering design standards for subdivision and site plans for the Township of North Glengarry.
Okay, thank you. Tim, this was great reading. It's such an important document, but if anybody is having trouble sleeping at night, they could read a page a night, and go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So everyone's ready for the test after this?
Yeah, yeah.
So this is a great document. It really, one of the things when we talk to developers is, even though we have, you know, their engineering standards and they're established, there are different methods of calculating, you'd say, the amount of flow that we require in a water main for fire purposes or for flow for the system. So there are different methods. There's our different cross-sections of roads, and really, all the things that we're looking for as a municipality is in this manual. This was a fantastic initiative that was undertaken by SDG. All six municipalities participated, and we all had input. There are some, the final manuals are a little bit different from each municipality, just suiting our particular regions. And they are, it really emphasizes, when you read them, it is a living document. There are going to be updates. There's some cross-sections that we were looking for and hoping to get in there, but, you know, in the interest of completing the project, and we're just getting those standard cross-sections out there. And then we'll expect to see updates coming. And as we do projects like Main Street, we can add our standards for street furniture and which are applicable to every subdivision, but those that actually have them, we can get those standards in there and really just start building a database of how we want this to go.
No, it's a great tool for people looking into the township to come and build, for sure. Questions or comments? Go ahead, councillor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to reiterate that, I mean, the Community Development Committee and discussions we've had with developers, the interest that has been shown, it is fantastic. Now be able to hand them something to say, here's what you got to deal with, and here's what you got to do. And it's going to help them move forward, and it's going to help them decide if it's somewhere they want to be and somewhere they want to build. So just, and I know it's been mentioned for a while, it's been coming and coming, so it's nice to finally see it. Thank you.
Good. Further questions or comments at this time? Okay, thank you, and I'll call the vote on that. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Moving on to PW 2025-22, Winter Maintenance Agreement with United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry. Deputy Mayor Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Massey, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives staff report number PW 2025-22, Winter Maintenance Agreement with United Counties of SDG, and that council authorizes the mayor and chief administrative officer to enter into a winter maintenance agreement with the Corporation of the United Counties of Stormont, Dundas, and Glengarry on behalf of the Township of North Glengarry.
Okay, thank you. Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is our winter maintenance agreements. There is a big key difference this year, so we have, this is the renewing the agreements that we've had for the past, I believe it was four years. So they were in place before, you know, I started as director. We did the road rationalization study with SDG, and we had a look at some of the traffic counts around. And, you know, in consultation with fire, we saw, you know, what our road network was like, how we're getting resources to places, and really what the needs are. And so the key difference we see on this one is that McCormick Power Dam Road is going to be, for winter maintenance purposes, taken care of by the county. That means that it'll receive 24-hour winter maintenance, and we will go and take care of SDG Road 21. The reason for this is the traffic count is very much lower on 21 than it is on McCormick. The length is also a little bit longer, so, you know, there is some remuneration there because there's more work that we need to do. But it's also closer to our shop, so it's really just one of those common sense kind of changes. And it gets rid of a very difficult turn for the county plows that they had in Glen Sandfield. So there's another bonus. And, yeah, so we endorse...
endorse the, the winter maintenance agreements, and think it's going to be a good change for the township and the county.
Okay, great. Questions or comments? Go ahead, Counselor Manley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed, Tim, it says that we're performing winter maintenance on forty-three. What part of, are we doing all forty-three, or what part of forty-three are we doing?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. So we, my apologies, that should be from SDG Road forty-three up to Sky Road along SDG thirty.
Oh, okay. Okay. So let's, okay, let me extend you on thirty. Okay, all right.
Good. Okay. Any further, go ahead, Counselor Madden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, as you say, common sense. I like it. It's not often we get to say that. And I just want to reiterate, it's common sense, and it makes sense. Thank you.
That was it. Yeah, no, for sure. And, you know, we, we use the material they, from the counties to do the county roads, so that they are done at a, right, correct?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. We actually just charge back the material, so we do a, a group tender. So we get the same rates as the county, we get it delivered, and then it's at our shop. We put it in the back of the truck, and we go and-
And then charge it back to the counties.
Charge it back.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Go ahead, Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Just a quick one. So are you using straight salt then on, I'm going to use County Road thirty as an example? Because it, it, I hadn't, I don't know, I haven't had any complaints on it the last few years, but there were a few years there where there was, there were a lot of complaints. And now it seems okay. Is that what's going on? I'm just curious.
Through you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, so we, the, probably the main difficulty with these type of agreements is we have a mix of asphalt, of hardtop and gravel roads. So especially with these roads, even though they are a class four, we will send a truck that will just pick up pure salt, and, and salt these hardtop roads, because it, it's more suited. Generally, we normally have a salt grit mix, but yes, it will be the same for twenty-one. The, the county roads generally get a straight salt mixture.
Okay. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. There are none opposed. Okay. Items under the consent agenda. Counselor Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Cadell, that the Council of the Township of North Glengarry receives, receives the items from the consent agenda for information purposes only.
Any questions on the consent agenda? All those in favor of the motion? Motion is carried. None opposed. Moving on to new business, AD twenty-two-five sixteen, resolution to abandon strong mayor powers. It is moved by myself, seconded by Deputy Mayor Williams, whereas the Government of Ontario has imposed strong mayor powers on municipalities without broad consultation or consent, and whereas over one hundred municipalities have passed resolutions opposing these powers and requesting their removal, some as early as twenty-twenty-three, and whereas strong mayor powers concentrate authority in a single office undermining democratic governance, council collaboration, and transparency, and whereas municipalities are most effective through shared leadership and local decision-making. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Township of North Glengarry opposes the imposition of strong mayor's power and requests its removal from the list of designated municipalities, and further that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to the Honorable Doug Ford, Premier of Ontario, the Honorable Rob Flack, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, the Association of Municipalities of Ontario, AMO, and the Association of Municipal Managers, Clerks, and Treasurers of Ontario, AMCTO. And I will be asking for a recorded vote. Are there any questions or comments right now?
So does this, does this mean that, this does not mean that that's going to happen necessarily?
That's right.
But we're, we're putting out the-
That, yeah.
That we would like to see this happen.
And just a question to Deputy Mayor, has any of this been discussed at Roma at any point?
Yeah, there's, there's been a lot of discussion about the strong mayor powers, particularly with AMO, because it's, it's, it's an issue across Ontario. And AMO's been uneasy about taking a stand on it. And, and so we, nothing has really happened there. And I don't know, it, there's, there's all kinds of problems tied in with the legislation, and all of that stuff, that they, they keep looking at it, but haven't, haven't, you know, taken a position at this, at this point in time. But there's, believe me, there's a lot of discussion around the table on it.
Okay. Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Seeing none. Deputy Mayor Williams, yea or nay?
Yea.
Counselor Massey, nay or yea?
Yea.
Counselor Cadell?
Yea.
Counselor Manley?
Yea.
Counselor Madden?
Yea.
Counselor Martin?
Yea.
And Mayor McDonald, yea. There are none opposed. Motion is carried. Thank you. Saint Vincent de Paul, do you want to just?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I had a call last week from one of the board members and a volunteer, and she was good enough to send an email. I asked Lynn Marie to send an email, just to give us the details. I guess a quick synopsis, they're massively overloaded. They're doing everything they can to avoid sending things to the landfill. She's given us a list of, I think, ten, at least, twelve, no, fifteen, seventeen, twenty things that they're doing to, to redirect from the landfill and to get things gone. They're basically asking for space. So this was in response to a social media post that went out to offer some space to community groups. I said that, obviously, I sent the email to everybody today, that after I got it, I think it came in last night, and I said that we would have a discussion about it, whether it was today or, or Wednesday, a committee of the whole, see if there's anything we could come up with. I CC'd our Director of Public Works, who has access to some buildings. I'm going to be honest, off the top of my head, I don't know of a space that we've got right now that will give them what they need. I had a thought of maybe mentioning some private owners as well, that may have some space. If it's a temporary thing, maybe they'd be able to give them a hand, but I'm obviously not going to put them on the spot. So just, I said we'd sort of open it up for discussion. If anybody's got ideas, if anybody can think of anything that I'm not aware of, or that I haven't thought of at this point.
Counselor Manley.
I thought of it today when I was taking my bottles back. That facility's closing it on November seventeenth. There may be a possibility there. Is it a government-owned building? I don't know. I presume it is.
No, it's privately owned, yeah.
Even though it's attached to the court?
The, the court is privately owned as well.
Okay. All right. So.
That's, yes, good, good point.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
That's true. Deputy Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, that, that was quite an email. Twenty, yeah, I mean, they, they clearly have an overabundance of very many different types of products, from clothing to housewares, to books, to you name it. And then, I don't know, you know, it, it's sort of like saying, well, I need to, I need to, it's like, it's like when a, when a person moves out of a big house into a smaller house, and they hire a storage unit to put all of the stuff in there that they can't fit in their new house, and then it sits there forever, and it never disappears. And so I can see that it's more of a capacity problem. They can't get the stuff out, organize it fast enough, and get it out the door fast enough. And, and, and it, it sounds like a quantity issue to me, and providing more storage will probably exacerbate that, not solve it. So, you know, I mean, my advice would be limit what they accept into the facility.
Yeah. I think the problem is a lot of people just drop it off, and then if they don't drop it off there, it'll be dropped off in one of our back roads somewhere, and left there. We're pretty fortunate that we don't get a lot of that. But, yeah, I, I do agree, though, if we give them a storage, they're just going to store it. But I think it was more for them to have days where people can come in and pick anything they want for free and take it.
Yes. And that's, just to clarify, the, I think the real ask is to have a space that things can be placed so that people can see them and take them. They don't even want to charge people for this. So I found out, I believe it's every Thursday is free day, so people can go and take anything and everything they want from Saint Vincent on Thursday. And that's the day they actually put a bunch of stuff out in front of the store to encourage people to come in. And her point, Lynn Marie's point on the email, and in the conversation we had, was, you know, weather's coming, so they're not even going to be able to do that anymore. And part of this is a concern for the volunteers. She said there is so much stuff that comes in over weekends, and especially long weekends, that the space that's made available for people to drop gets so stacked, that it's actually dangerous for their volunteers to go in and sort this stuff, because it's just so full. So I think the ask is really for a space where they can make this stuff available to people. It's not for more storage, it's not to just stock stuff in, it's to place stuff so that it can go. That's the, that's really the ask here. And it's, I, I don't have the impression it's a forever thing. It sounds like it would be more of a temporary thing. Temporary, I think, is a bit of a sliding scale here, obviously, if there's that much stuff and more stuff coming in. And not, obviously, to put words in their mouth, but I think that's really what it is, is almost sort of a storefront space that's needed.
Okay. Counselor Massey.
Yeah, they do, I read the email there, and they do a lot of good, and especially the food basket that's on the rise, it's incredible, in a small town like Alexandria. So they do, we do need, I'd like to, discussion to be moved to the, like, I know we're going to discuss it at the committee of the whole, and then give us two days to, and then maybe, Mr. Mayor, if you could contact, I don't know, would you contact for the beer store? But that's a good idea right there. Like, and then I see in the email too, they receive a lot of donations from outside, from North Glengarry. I think they maybe, I know, sometimes it's hard to, to control that, but I think it's a start there. But definitely, we do need to, to try to help them in any way we can. And there's a lot of, the thrift stores, there's a million of them out, out there, and they're full tight to the brim, and every, like, there's, just.
Okay. Yeah. Gary, do you have anything? No. Okay. Okay. So we'll, we'll have a further discussion on this, and controlled burn by the fire department. I don't know. Yes.
Mention one more thing. I, I can't pull up the attachment on my phone, but to Counselor Massey's point, the graph that we were given with the increase of food hampers over the last three years is astounding. Absolutely astounding. And I, I don't think we have percentages, but it's just straight numbers. But I mean, it's a constant increase. So just any public that is listening, watching, if you're thinking of somewhere to donate before the end of the year, Saint Vincent is definitely a worthwhile cause in terms of the food bank. The work they're doing in the area is absolutely amazing. We've been in, it's been a couple of years since we were there, and she did invite us, me, and I think all of us, to take a look at their operations, and I will take her up on it. Won't be in the next few weeks, but I will take her up on taking a look at the, the store, and what they've got, and what they're dealing with. But for the public, donations, I'm going to solicit for them.
Money donations.
Yes, monetary.
Okay. Thank you. Nothing further. We'll move on to, next regular meeting of council is Monday, November tenth, at six P M. here in the council chambers. Question period. Are there any questions from the audience?
Can you use the mic?
Sure.
Help me, Captain.
It's okay. Well, we can use that one.
Thank you. I just want to commend you, and thank you for passing the resolution twenty-two-five sixteen, and to move forward in a very democratic fashion. And I appreciate you doing that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break, and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
We have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session.
Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone. Okay. We do have a closed session, so we will take a two-minute break and then move into closed session. Thank you, everyone, for joining us. Words to say, go Jays, go. Thank you, everyone.[395.12]